Hello. I'm Lesley Cullum, Voter Service Chair of the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And on behalf of the League, I am pleased to welcome you to this candidate forum sponsored by the League in partnership with Rutherford County TV. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent format for voters to become more familiar with the candidates and their positions. We appreciate the support from Rutherford County Government provided by Brian Robertson, CIO at the Office of Information Technology, and Lee Harris at RCTV. They and their staff enable broadcasting and streaming of our forums to reach a large number of voters. The League seeks to conduct our forums in a nonpartisan manner. Key participants, especially the moderator, are not publicly aligned with any candidate. In the upcoming Rutherford County general election, you will be voting for important positions in county government such as county mayor, county sheriff, county school board, and county commissioners. Early voting starts July 13th and runs through July 28th. In a process that's new this year and implemented by the Rutherford County Election Commission to increase voter convenience, on election day itself, that's August 2nd, you'll be able to vote at any one of the voting centers located throughout Rutherford County. To learn which voting location will be best for you on election day, visit the Rutherford County Election Commission at www.ruco.vote. We thank you for your attention as you hear these candidates introduce themselves and answer questions about pertinent issues facing our county. We hope you find this forum useful in deciding the candidates you choose to support. Remember, your vote gives you a prime opportunity to influence how government is conducted in Rutherford County. Please make your decision known by voting. Thank you for joining us, and remember, your vote counts.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Riley Souza, and I will serve as moderator for this candidate forum. This forum is co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, and the Rutherford County Office of Information Technology. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent way for voters to become more familiar with candidates and their positions. It is my pleasure to welcome both our audience here at the county courthouse and our viewers at home to this program. This evening, we will be hearing remarks from the candidates for Rutherford County Commissioner Districts 4, 6, 7, and 8. Before introducing the candidates, I would like to outline the procedure for the forum. Each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement in a two-minute period. When all candidates have completed the opening statement, then several additional questions will be asked. The candidates will respond to each of these questions with a one-minute answer. The candidates will be allowed two minutes to answer the last question and make any closing remarks. I will begin by introducing each candidate, and I want to thank each of them for their gracious acceptance of our invitation to participate in this event. Speaking first is Mr. Jacks with the opening statement, two minutes.
Thank you. My name is John Jakes. I'm a candidate for District 4. My wife's name is Karen. She works at the hospital. I have a daughter that's a second semester senior at the University of South Carolina. I have a son that's a rising sophomore at University of Tennessee Chattanooga. I came to Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, 32 years ago to attend MTSU where I received an accounting degree. I also have a master's degree in family financial planning and counseling from the University of Alabama. I'm a CPA. I'm also a certified financial planner. I consider myself a financial therapist by trade, and I've had an accounting and tax office in Murfreesboro for 27 years. So I've had the opportunity to meet and talk with people over a wide range of issues over an extended period of time to see how that, everything that the county does affects them on both a personal level, their family, their household, their business, and other areas of their personal life.
Mr. P., two minutes for the opening statement.
My name is Robert P. I'm the current commissioner in District 4 and running for reelection and would like to ask for your help. I've been commissioner for 20 years, which is a long time, but I've got a lot of accomplishments to go along with that. I'm not a career politician. I don't do that for my livelihood. I work for Assurion in Smyrna. I graduated from Kittrelle High School and then from MTSU with ABS and Animal Science. And I like a hour having a major in chemistry and an hour having a major in biology and an hour having a major in math. I've been a manager for about 40 years, almost, from Bridgestone and also from Troton in Smyrna. I'm currently a maintenance technician at Assurion. I've married to Pat P. for 37 years now. Don't know how that lady's put up with me that long, but she's been very gracious in that time. She's a retired schoolteacher. My oldest daughter, Rachel, is an educator. She's an interventionist at Brown's Chapel. My youngest daughter, Catherine, is a stormwater engineer here for the county. And they presented my wife and I was three wonderful grandchildren, and we're absolutely loving that. When I'm not working, I'm babysitting. So I really had a good time doing that. My folks have been in Tennessee since before Tennessee was a county. My ancestors actually signed a petition to make Rutherford County a county. I intend to continue to help make Rutherford County a great place to live and to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buchanan, opening statement, two minutes.
First of all, let me say thank you to the League of Women Voters for providing this forum to allow us to address the people of Rutherford County. And let us explain who we are and what our ideas are for the next four years. The next four years is going to be vital and important to what we do with this county. A lot of things are out there, a lot of situations that we'll have to deal with, and a lot of issues. My name is Pettis Reed. I'm currently the commissioner for District 8 that covers the Rockvale, Igable, Crescent, Midland area of the county. It covers exactly 132 square miles. When you look at it out there, that's a large area. In fact, it is the largest district that we have in Rutherford County. Just like Mr. P., my family's been here a long time, too. We arrived in 1802, settled in exactly the same area where I am right now. We come here by covered wagon, and if you happen to go out in the Rockvale area and go to Champion Run, you'll find out exactly where my family's covered wagon finally stopped. And I'm still out that way, and that's where we are. It's something that I've always wanted to do, to be a county commissioner. For 44 years, I worked for the nonprofit Tennessee Farm Bureau organization in the area of communications. I did not work for the insurance company, but I worked in the area dealing with telling the story of agriculture and farming, working with legislation. At one time, I was also in the area down there where I reported on things at the legislature. I'm also a writer, a journalist. I had a column that's in 52 newspapers across the state of Tennessee. But in 2013, at the end of that time, I retired and decided at that time that I wanted to take a chance to return back to this county that has given me so much in my family all these years, a chance to be a county commissioner and to serve the people of Rutherford County. And that's what I think I've done over the past four years. I've been a part of this county commission, which I think has been a really good county commission the past four years, and I think the next four years will be exactly that. I have two grown children who also live in this county. I'm a widower, and as I said, I am retired, and I'm still ready to give a full-time job and a full-time work to the people of Rutherford County.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, and I'm sorry about the confusion over your name. I think you all got up and changed seats at some point just to confuse us. So hopefully, we have it now. Speaking next is Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Ashley. I appreciate you moderating. Judy, thank you for keeping the time. And Legal Women Voters, thank you for putting on this wonderful forum to be able to speak to the constituents that will, you know, hold all the power. At the end of the day, in the republic, you are the ones who will decide who will represent you. My name is Edward Phillips. I'm running for District 8, Crescent, Christiana, Igable, Rockvale, Midland, parts of the county. I'm married to Tiffany Jones Phillips of Midland for seven years now. I've had, I have two children, Jenny, who's 14, who's about to start high school, and Elijah, who's about to start kindergarten. I work at Sims Recycling, a recycling plant in Laverne, as a shipping and receiving supervisor. I was born and raised as well here in Rutherford County. My wife's family goes back about six or seven generations here in the county as well. A lot of service-oriented people are in my lineage. My dad served in the military. My grandparents served in the military, in the Air Force. My in-laws as well have taken care of veterans. They have served in the military. You know, I'm just a regular person seeking to serve my community. That means I don't know everything as well, and I'm not afraid to admit that. For you as a constituent, what I'm willing to do is to sit down with you, come to you with the issues that may be facing not only the district but the county as a whole, and figure out how we can solve these together. Because it's you and I working together with the other 20 commissioners that we will achieve, you know, the solutions that we need for the 21st century problems that we have. I would appreciate your vote in the upcoming election. Early voting does start tomorrow as we've been over, but I look forward to the questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Ms. Buchanan, two minutes for the opening statement.
Thanks again, Legal Women Voters, for allowing us to come. My name is Veronica Buchanan, and I don't consider myself as a politician. I consider myself as a public servant. I've been serving the county since 2008 on various boards. I am retired, so I have a whole lot of time to dedicate to this position. I am married with two children and a grandchild. I've born and raised in this same district. I have really put forth a lot of effort with this campaign because I'm running the hardest campaign in the county. I'm running as a right-hand, so that shows you that I'm really serious about what I'm doing. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Very much. Next, we have Mr. Jennings. Jennings?
Jernigan.
Jernigan. Jernigan. I am so sorry. Mr. Jernigan, you have two minutes for your opening statement. Thank you.
My name is Joe Frank Jernigan. I'm a lifelong resident of Rutherford County. Children and grandchildren all born and lived here. I've served the people of the 6th District for many years and would like to continue to do so. I've been on the planning committee, ag committee, budget, public works committee, retired assistant road superintendent, and look forward to continuing serving the people of Rutherford County, and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Mr. Kush.
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you. You have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. I am Michael Kush, the current county commissioner for District 7, and I am married to Stephanie, and between us, we have six children, all which have been through the Rutherford County school system and as an active parent with them through the school. I can understand and appreciate some of the challenges that the school board has. I have been very active in the Chamber of Commerce prior to my election four years ago. I was on the executive committee and also on the Board of Directors. I was on the chairman of the Economic Development Council, and in 2014, I was awarded the Nashville Business Journal Impact on Economic Development Award. So I've been very active in the community, and from the business side, I am a 36-years in the business as a businessman in the marketing and selling of civil engineered infrastructure products. So that means I listen more than I speak. I seek win-win situations. I negotiate deals with the right people, at the right price, and at the right terms. And all those assets and abilities give me the proper foundation to deal with the things that go on in the county commission. I am currently on the Public Works Committee, Property Management Committee, Purchasing Committee, and I am a 10-year veteran of the Rutherford County Planning Commission. Mayor Nancy Allen appointed me to the Public Building Authority, which I served for five years. So all that makes me a well-rounded individual and understand how the county and the funding and working with constituents all go hand in hand. So that's why I asked for your vote, August 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Edwards with the opening statements. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you, Women League of Voters. My name is Jennifer Edwards, and I am running for county commissioner of District 7. I am not a polished politician. I am not a career politician. I'm a mom. I'm a mom from an active-duty military family. I'm also a military brat, grew up in the military. I moved here 16 years ago next month to go to MTSU. I did graduate from MTSU with a degree in psychology with a concentration in sociology. This is my home. I spent a lot of time growing up in Florida as a child. I actually went home once in the 16 years I've been here and came back within a year. I wasn't even back in Florida a year because this is home. I have two children currently. One's about to be 16 this weekend, and I have a little one who's going to be five. I know how it is to be, right now, a working family raising children in the school district. The little one's about to start school on August 6th. We are actively a part of that. I know what it feels like to have to juggle everything and budget, a family budget. So I am not where a lot of these people are, where they've made these big decisions, but I've kept a household and I've kept it running smoothly, which gives me the same credibility that a lot of these polished politicians have. What I am is a caring neighbor. I'm very strong in my neighborhood, and I think everybody's voice needs to be heard. And what I want to do is represent District 7 because we are very unique in the makeup of our district, and I want to be the voice that is heard, and I will appreciate any vote starting tomorrow and on August 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to our questions. This question will be answered first by Mr. P. You will have one minute to answer this question. What makes you the candidate to vote for?
Actually, I was going to use this on my closing statement, but I'm a person that gets things done. I don't just talk about what I'm going to do. I don't talk about being a conservative, but I helped make it a rule that our development tax, all, half of that went straight to debt service. As a member of our budget committee, I've helped save $22 million in the last 12 years. I helped freeze our taxes for our 65-year-olds that qualify for that. I'm also the person that forced behind putting the SROs in our schools, in all of our schools. We wouldn't have them if it hadn't been for me insisting on that in our budget process. Anyway, if you need somebody to help you to get things done, thank you.
Next, Mr. Reed. What makes you the candidate to vote for? You have one minute to answer.
I think when you're wanting a job done, you look for someone with experience. I come from corporate America where I worked for 44 years. I was very successful there dealing with multimillion-dollar budgets. I come from a 36-year successful marriage. The only thing that that ended was due to the fact of my wife passed away with pancreatic cancer. But everything that I have tried to work with, I put my entire effort in and tried to make it a success, or at least to make it better. That's why I think somebody should be voting for me, is that I'm going to give my entire effort for it. I'm going to try to do my best to do with it. I'm trained. I've attended numerous institutions across the United States to better myself, to do better in what I do, and I think I have proved over the past four years that I'm dedicated to the county commission and to my district.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Phillips. What makes you the candidate to vote for?
Thank you, Ashley. You're doing a great job, by the way. Just, I don't have, I'm not an elected official, so I don't have a record to speak of in that manner. What I do have is experience in life, just as much as most people every day. I've got two kids. I'll be well-invested in the school system for years to come, one just starting kindergarten. So for at least the next 13 years, I'll certainly be well-invested in that, making sure that we continue to have the greatest schools that, you know, are pinnacle here in the state of Tennessee. I'm willing to listen because, like I mentioned before, I don't know everything, and with that, we can find solutions together, and I want to try to meet with constituents at their times of availability and to be able to talk to them and discuss the issues. I'd really appreciate your vote. I want to serve, and I want to lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Buchanan. What makes you the candidate to vote for? You have one minute to answer.
Being on BZA, Ethics Committee, Planning Commission, and redistricting, I feel like that I have the experience that's needed for this county commission position. I understand budgeting. I understand people's money. By owning five different businesses that spanned over 20 years, I get it. I understand how to have an ear to hear, and I understand how to get down when the getting's going. I understand how to make things happen. But I think I'm the one, and again, I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Jernigan. What makes you the candidate to vote for? You have one minute.
I feel like with my experience over the years that I've served and the different committees that I've served on, and try to support what is best for the citizens of Rutherford County as well as the school systems, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Kush. What makes you the candidate to vote for? One minute.
Why I want you to push for Kush? For my second term, it's really simple. I love helping people. I have that servant attitude. To build on the foundation that I ran on four years ago, I want to bring common sense, logic, and reliability to the commission, which I've done and which I've proven. The challenge is to maintain the quality of life with the growth that we have, and while I have a few seconds, I would remind that in the four years that I have been commissioner, we have not raised taxes three of those four years, and the one year that we did, nearly 100% of it went for schools and teachers' salaries, to increase teacher salaries, which is a challenge. As we grow, we have to get good teachers in here, and we need them to stay, to retain them, and not lose them to neighboring counties that are paying a little more money. So I'm proud of the fact that of those three, three out of the four years, we did not raise taxes.
Thank you. And finally, we have, no, next, we have Ms. Edwards. What makes you the candidate to vote for? You have one minute.
I believe I'm the candidate for District 7 because I want to fight for and make happen the things that are important to us, green initiatives that are county-wide. We have a landfill that is, it's done, it's filled. That is something that we need to address in Rutherford County. I want to be a person that brings that and keeps that until it is resolved. I want to look at, I have kids in the school system right now. We have the best schools in Murfreesboro. I am completely against school vouchers and school choice because we have the best schools already. I want to make sure that we're budgeting efficiently to keep those teachers and keep these schools, but also stop with the overcrowding of our schools. I also want to look at ways to make sure that housing is affordable. These are things that are important to people in District 7, and I want to be the voice to bring those concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Jacks, I didn't forget about you.
Jakes.
What makes you, Jake, what makes you the candidate to vote for?
When I look at Rutherford County going out to 2050, I see a very different county. There's a lot of new technologies that are disrupting. For instance, nationwide, statewide, and even in our county, there's disruptive technologies like the gig economy, the sharing economy, the platform economy. All of these new economies are going to take a different look to understand them, implement them into our county, to see how do we manage them, how do we control them. An example of the gig economy is Uber and Lyft. The sharing economy, there's going to be ride-sharing, car-sharing services. The platform economy such as Zillow. All of these economies are changing the way business is done, and the county is going to have to adapt to that change, and I want to have the vision to create that change.
Thank you. We'll now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Mr. Reed. What is your vision for Rutherford County in 10 years?
In 10, in 10 years, we're going to see growth. I think that you'll see that for sure. We're looking at right now somewhere in the neighborhood of 317,000 people that's in this county at this time. That growth is going to continue. In 10 years, it's going to be important that our county commission continue to look at that growth, to see where we are as far as the infrastructure of our county is concerned, dealing with roads, dealing with the fire, dealing with our sheriff's department, dealing with our ambulance service and things of that type. I think through the ability of the individuals we have here on our county commission working together, that I think that we can see in 10 years that we will continue to strive to do what we're doing now. But it will take a continual effort to look at the budgets that we have and try to help the people and the citizens of this county.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips, what's your vision for Rutherford County in 10 years? You have one minute.
I believe in 10 years, what I see for Rutherford County is a closed dump and a 21st-century solution for that issue, started and already implemented. I'd like to see in 10 years of Rutherford County, a budget that prioritizes saving for future growth with, you know, increased revenues that we experience through that growth that we're already having with our population. We need to set some of that aside and save for those future schools. We will have more schools. Right now, 47 open schools, with the 48th about to open out there in Rockvale. We've expanded Igable School to accommodate new residents down there with that growing area of the county, and looking for another school to be built here in the next two to three years. So we've got a lot of things coming down our way, but with the right planning, the right saving, and the right vision, I believe we can do better and continue to be the best county and be a beacon for other counties to study. So that's what I see for in 10 years.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan, what is your vision? What is your vision for Rutherford County in 10 years? You have one minute.
Well, I think we're ninth in the nation as being the fastest-growing county. In 10 years, we'll probably be number one, but growth, I believe if we carefully plan it by doing reasonable things to plan it and not just put anything in here, I think we will be able to tackle this growth. Also, aiding our disabled, our homeless, and our elderly. That'll be key in having affordable housing for those that don't have it. I believe if we can tackle those things in 10 years, I think we'll be great.
Mr. Jernigan, what is your vision for Rutherford County in 10 years? You have one minute.
I think in the next 10 years, I agree with what a lot of folks have already said. Growth is going to continue to be a big problem, and we've got to make sure that we've got the resources for schools and roads to handle and to take care of.
Thank you. Mr. Kush, what is your vision for Rutherford County in 10 years?
Well, in the Planning Commission, which, again, I've been on for 10 years, we're already trying to manage and look forward past 10 years with the zoning issues. But, man, in a perfect world, we've got to deal with congestion in infrastructure would be one. We need to modernize our jail. We're at capacity. We need to add on to that. That has certainly got to happen within the next 10 years. We need to get better use of our brick-and-mortar schools. What I'd like to see is we What I'd like to see is, we historically, Rutherford County lagged behind in teacher pay and deputy pay. We lose good folks to surrounding cities and counties. I would love, within the next 10 years, to be able to flip that, and have good teachers and deputies want to move to Rutherford County for our jobs, as opposed to a mass exodus of our people leaving Rutherford County to seek work elsewhere because of our low pay.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Edwards, what is your vision for Rutherford County in 10 years? You have one minute.
When I first moved here, we had four Walmarts in Rutherford County. We have like 16 now. So in the next 10 years, we're going to be bigger than we are now. What I see is continuing to have the best public-funded schools in the state of Tennessee, leading in teacher pay and small classroom sizes. I want a county where people can afford to live in homes, not mega apartment complexes, where our residents are able to have a quality of life, because it's affordable to live here. That's the Rutherford County I see in 10 years, and the Rutherford County that I would fight for. Thank you.
Ms. Jakes, what is your vision of Rutherford County in 10 years? You have one minute.
This past tax season, we did tax returns for people that moved here from Wisconsin, Michigan, Illinois, Indiana, Pennsylvania, Ohio. And when I talked to them about why they came to Middle Tennessee and to Murfreesboro and Rutherford County specifically, they all said that they liked the schools, they liked the tax structure, they liked the infrastructure, they liked the tone of the community as far as things to do. And as we continue to grow at that level over the next 10 years, we're going to have to look at ways to simplify, to streamline, to consolidate. We've got to make levels of government, we've got to reduce duplicity in levels of government. Just recently, you saw that Montgomery County, Tennessee, is starting to form a metropolitan government, and we've got to start thinking in that direction.
Thank you. Mr. P., what is your vision for Rutherford County in 10 years? You have one minute.
We've got the best schools in the state of Tennessee, right here in Rutherford County. We've got a very exemplary fire and ambulance service. We've got a good sheriff's department now. We had some problems there and have got them straightened out. We've got a problem with trash, and I've got several ideas on how to take care of that problem, and we're headed very well to do just that. But one of the main things that I envision is working with our state legislators to help us find better ways to get the money that we need to operate. Right now, about the only way we're going to get money to operate, to do these things, and to continue to do them, is through the property tax. Our development tax has been frozen. We need our legislators, and I think that they will. They realize this. We've got people that are going into the legislature now that have seen these problems firsthand at the county level, and that's what I envision, them helping us. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Mr. Phillips, and you'll have one minute to answer this question. If elected, how will you stay in contact with constituents?
Very good question. Thank you very much. When I ran four years ago, I stated that I will hold community town hall meetings, and that hasn't changed. If I get elected, I would like to hold at least one town hall meeting in each precinct, basically Rockville, Crescent, Eagleville, Christiana, in those areas, at least once a quarter in one of the precincts. The other thing is, I'm very accessible with my phone number. My cellphone number's been out there as I go door-to-door. They have, it's personal. The other thing is, as your representative, it's essential that I hear from you. I can't do my job without hearing from those who I will represent. So I will make myself as accessible as I humanly possibly can. Any events, ballgames, restaurants, things of that nature, just come up and talk to me. I'd love to speak with you about whatever issue may be facing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Buchanan, if elected, how will you stay in touch with constituents? You have one minute.
Well, there's so many ways to stay in contact, social media, cellphones, just going to I just learned how to do this social media thing, and I'm loving it. So I will definitely be on social media. But I really, when I was on Planning Commission, everybody that would call me, they would always say, "You always answer your phone." I said, "That's what I'm charged to do." So I'm going to be as available as possible, so.
Thank you. Mr. Jernigan, if elected, how will you stay in touch with your constituents? You have one minute.
I'll continue to do like I have in the past. I try to see as many people as I can, and I accept all calls that people call me, and if I don't have the right answers, I try to get it for them.
Thank you. Mr. Kush, if elected, how will you stay in contact with your constituents? You have one minute.
Thank you, Ashley. This little device right here is an instant District 7 office. It's my mobile office. I am accessible. In fact, I get compliments all the time from constituents who reach out to me, because I make it a real effort to return their call the same day, and at the very least, a 24-hour return call time. So they enjoy that, and they appreciate that, because their problem is something I take very serious, or they wouldn't have made the effort to call. I'm accessible. All the commissioners are accessible. Our phone numbers and our emails are all public access through the Rutherford County website. I have my own email address, D7Kush@gmail.com, which people can email me anytime they like. I'm in the community. I'm accessible, so I'll continue what I'm doing.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, if elected, how will you stay in contact with your constituents? You have one minute.
Thank you. So I'm unique in that I grew up without technology, and now we have it. So I know firmly how to use all social media, and that is a way how everybody is communicating nowadays, and makes it accessible, more than just the cellphone. Having the cellphone is good, but you also need to know how to actively and efficiently use all social media platforms, so absolutely engage in that. Also, one thing that works is, I went and met with many people in my subdivision, which is one of the largest ones in District 7, to unite us for a Neighborhood Watch a few years ago, knocking on doors and talking to people, and being that person that they can contact, and knowing that whatever the concern is, I will knock down whatever doors in our way to make sure that we're heard and we get the assistance that we need.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes, if elected, how will you stay in contact with your constituents? You have one minute.
I'll stay in contact. I have a public office which has normal business hours, and even during this campaign period, I've had people come to my office, which I thought to see my submarine museum, but they actually came from my district to talk to me about issues and concerns. So my office is available during normal business hours. I also have an email push program that I've been telling people that I've met with, that if they would like to receive notices from me, that I can push them an email through my email push program that I use at my office, so they can be in constant contact. I'll also be willing to make home visits if there's a constituent that wants to visit me, and would like me to come to their house and talk to about an issue or a concern, or something that's going on in the county. The other thing that I've done to kind of stay in touch is, I've set up a little advisory group of people within my district, so that they can give me insight of what they think is best for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. P., if elected, how will you stay in contact with your constituents? You have one minute.
Well, as been stated, you all have my email, my home phone number, my cellphone number, and also have a Facebook account that, although I avoid it, my daughters keep me updated on that. As soon as I get a notice, I'm calling you back, or posting something back. The main way that I meet people or talk to people in the district is, I may be going over to Bud's Tire to get a flat fixed, I may be coming out of church, I could be meeting you at the football stadium and say, "Hey, Robert, what's going on?" And that's how I communicate with people. Now, the other way, and it surprises a lot of people, if I get a call and I'm not able to get back in touch with you, a lot of times, I'm going to come knock on your door, and you may find my business card there, and a little note on the back of it if you do. You know, that's why I've had a lot of people surprised. They say, "Well, I just called to tell you how I felt." Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Reed, if elected, how will you stay in contact with your constituents? You have one minute.
Well, being at the end of the line, you probably have heard just about all the ways that we are going to be visible, and mine's not too much different than everyone else. I do have a website. It's Reed About Eight, and everybody, remember, there's Reed About Eight that's out there. But I'll be using that, of course, for the district. I'll use the cell, I'll use the home phone that I have there. I have office hours, too. It's 7:24. As I said, I'm retired. I give this a full-time job that I use as county commissioner. Also, visibility is very important, and when you said that, I pulled out of my notebook right here, I received a letter from the Rockville Middle School. I have three schools in my district, soon to have four there. I visit those schools quite often, and this letter right here was thanking me for that time and energy that I come by and visit with those schools on a regular basis. The fire departments, I drop by there, the city council meeting in Eagleville, I go by there and see what's going on around there at different times. So visibility within the district is very important.
Thank you. We'll now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Ms. Buchanan. What changes would improve county government, and how could those changes be implemented? You have one minute.
I think the changes that I would think that we would, if we would pour more into our poverty-stricken people, because little do we know is people sleeping in their cars and things of that sort here in Rutherford County. I sat down with the mayor one day and shared that with him, and he didn't realize some of the things I was sharing with him. But I think if we can tackle that, that will be phenomenal, because that's near and dear to my heart, especially with the elderly, and the disabled, and the ones that just can't take care of themselves. But I think if we can tackle that, that will be phenomenal. Thank you.
Mr. Jernigan, what changes would improve county government, and how could those changes be implemented? You have one minute.
I think, just like I said before, I think we need to try to communicate with all the different ones in the districts and all, and get their ideas, and all try to work together.
Thank you. Mr. Kush, what changes would improve county government, and how could those changes be implemented? You have one minute.
Difficult 60-second answer. So let me try and sum up. The most challenging thing we face on the commission is the fact that we are given mandates by the state to do many things, yet we do not get funds to put those mandates into operation. So we are very limited, as Commissioner P. stated earlier, we are very limited on how we, as a county, can create revenue. That is the hardest thing we face, is to try and do the public services that we need to do with the amount of money that we bring in. So there's an opportunity with potential new mayor that has the experience from the Senate, our existing mayor that's running for an office like that. There's a great opportunity for us to take that information from state to county, and perhaps get some things moving.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, what changes would improve county government, and how could those changes be implemented? You have one minute.
I think that we can improve county government by first, having a county government that represents Rutherford County. We're a diverse county. Our commission is not diverse. And by diverse, I mean women, ages, races. How can we be representative of our county if our commission is not? The way that we can implement that is by making sure that we have a representative commission, that we have a fresh and new perspective, that we're crossing political and economic lines. Just because you don't make enough money doesn't mean that you don't have an idea that can help make our county better. We have to value all voices that are in this county, and I think that's extremely important, and that's what needs to be implemented.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes, what changes would improve county government, and how could those changes be implemented? You have one minute.
Well, as we know, in the next 10 or 15 years, there's projected to be another 120,000 citizens in Rutherford County. And right now, our county government, and our city government, and other services are very fragmented, and we can't get to where we need to be to be a 2050 county, which is only 31 and 1/2 years from now, with all the layers of duplicity, both in the school system, and fire protection, public safety, and other areas of government. We've got to consolidate and streamline that. We've got to make it easier for people to feel engaged in their government. Right now, sometimes it's confusing whether you're in the city, they're in the county, who do you call? And we've got to make that whole process easier. And so one of the changes that I see coming is us consolidating government.
Thank you. Mr. P., what changes would improve county government, and how could those changes be implemented? You have one minute.
Well, to repeat myself, finding a better way to generate revenue other than just our property taxes. Now, I can't state that strongly enough. As Commissioner Kush noted, the state gets unfunded mandates from the federal government, and they pass them down to the next formal government, which is the county level, and I'm kind of like Truman, you know, the buck stops here. We are the ones responsible for funding these unfunded mandates that are handed down. Yeah, they didn't vote for tax increases, but they sure handed that puppy off to us, and we've got to figure out a way to do that. The other thing that we need to do, and I'll agree with my opponent here, we need to make it easier for our constituents to muddle through all our red tape. A lady out in the audience asked me, she wasn't sure who her commissioner was, because the county map is so squiggly there, and when you expand it out, you can't tell. We need to fix that for her. That's simple. We can do that. And it's not just that. There's zoning requests. Excuse me.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, what changes would improve county government, and how could those changes be implemented? You have one minute.
There are different changes that I see, and to find just one, that is hard. Just like all the other commissioners right here, this situation where we're talking about that the property tax is the only funding we have is a difficult thing we have to deal with right here, and we have to find some other way to find funding within our government. Also, the situation we have, we have the best county employees I think you would find anywhere in the state of Tennessee. I really appreciate what they do for us, and how hard they work. The thing is, so often, we are the training ground for a lot of these individuals, and they end up doing the training here, and they might end up going to another county. I think we have to find the funding to take care of these employees and the jobs that they're doing, and this might be some things we'll have to look at as far as changing the way that we take care of our employees.
Thank you. And Mr. Phillips, what should, excuse me, what changes would improve county government, and how could those changes be implemented? You have one minute.
Yes, ma'am. You know, we do have some other funding sources while the state does regulate where we can go with those. We have our sales tax, which has seen an increase in revenue year-over-year with the growth in population. People buying here in Rutherford County instead of going to, you know, we used to go to Antioch to go to Hickory Hall Mall, but now there's plenty of malls and plenty of places around here. So our tax revenues are increasing. It's an issue where we need to make sure that we stop adding to so much debt. Now, with the county growing like it is, it's not that we will be able to stop adding debt, but we need to stop adding so much. We went from $400 million in debt at the beginning of last fiscal year, at the end of last fiscal year, we added $50 million to that debt in one year. I think we need to prioritize our budgets better, so that we save some of those revenues when the times are good, with more development tax than what we need, so we can do something with our current revenues that will allow us to be able to readjust where we spend our money. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Mr. Jernigan. You'll have one minute to answer the question. What should the role of Rutherford County government be in providing public transportation services?
I'll say that, like I said before, we're going to have to do a better job of the resources that we do have now. I think a lot of time, we may be spending on things we shouldn't, and look a little closer to...
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kush, what should the role of Rutherford County government be in providing public transportation services? You have one minute.
Ashley, we certainly need to look into that. You know, the city has the Rover program, which I believe is underutilized. I don't think they advertise that as much as they should. And people aren't aware of what the end and beginning destination routes are for public transportation like that. We could do better to get people that don't have access to vehicles or don't have affordability to call an Uber, to call a taxi, to get bus service to get to where they need to go. We need that. And that's a great question. It's something that we hadn't been proposed to our commission before, and we need to look into that.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, what should the role of Rutherford County government be in providing public transportation services? You have one minute.
The Rover, which the city has, is actually something that my oldest has utilized to get around town if I'm out. And it is something that if he has a friend in the county that's too far to walk to, he can't use that to get to them. So he just can't go. So that's going to be the same for our people that are working, that are out at a farm or a warehouse that's in the county. They can't get there. And that is causing a problem, like Ms. Veronica stated, about people sleeping in their cars. We have, right now, families with children that have no homes. They're transient. But they live here in Rutherford County. Having public transportation can help with that because they're able to get to work then. And it's something we definitely have to look at and definitely look into ways we can look at what the city did and try to make something better that is expanded on what the Rover already does. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes, what should the role of Rutherford County government be in providing public transportation services?
Well, one of the things that I think would be a good idea versus us starting a new public transportation program would be maybe to do a public-private partnership with either some of the industries already here, like there's a company called MedRide, and maybe the county can partner with a private company. Also churches, there's people in churches that have capacity to help transport people. And so versus us just starting from scratch with a public transportation, I think we need to look at how we can partner with other organizations, other entities, and even private companies, and maybe figure out how we can use that for the benefit of all of our citizens.
Thank you. Mr. P., what should the role of Rutherford County government be in providing public transportation services? You have one minute.
Well, I agree that we should look at other private entities to help them. One we already do is Mid Cumberland. We help finance them, and they help people get about that can't get to their doctor's appointments, go get groceries and things like that. And we could easily expand that program. As a matter of fact, a little over time, we have increased their budget. And that's one thing that we could do for people local that are in a great need. One other thing we need to do as far as the whole county goes, and I mentioned this last time we had a debate, kind of got laughed at, but we need to look at a better way to get our folks in and out of Nashville and the places they're getting a job. We fell behind and let Lebanon get a rail line to their city in front of us. And that shouldn't have happened. That should have came to Rutherford County. And I think that something along those lines can still happen, and we need to investigate it and see what we can do to make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, what should the role of Rutherford County government be in providing public transportation services? You have one minute.
Well, just as Ben mentioned, that we do have the, I think, the upper Cumberland that travels out into the county. And I'd have no problem looking at that and expanding a little bit more, and also going to a private entity that worked with that. But the city has done a study as far as transportation and infrastructure, as far as the road system, and expanded that out several years to see what they want to do as far as working with their road systems. I think it's time for the county to also do that study as well. We haven't done that, looking at our road system that we have right now and finding better ways to move our public within the county. So we need to look at that as well as the public system and tie it all into one study and do that. Several years ago, we did a comprehensive plan, dealing with planning for the use of the land within this county. We could also do that with moving the people and transportation.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips, what should the role of Rutherford County government be in providing public transportation services? You have one minute.
Well, first off, I don't think expanding the government to take in more responsibility like that is where we're at right now. We've got a lot of other issues that are coming up, and I know transportation is an issue for folks trying to get to work. The Rover does work pretty well, you know, within Murfreesboro and things like that. But I think the better solution would be, as has been stated before as well, is get out of the way of private industry. Let's make sure our regulations are not stifling new and innovative solutions such, you know, Uber and Lyft have been doing it for probably, you know, a good couple of years now. I mean, they're working on new ways for autonomous vehicles, things like that. Ride-sharing programs like that need to be fostered and not stifled by government. That's what I'd like to see, at least, to stay out of the way of those innovators and let them find solutions for the 21st century problems.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan, what should the role of Rutherford County government be in providing public transportation services? You have one minute.
Transportation is key. We get that. I think at this particular point, you know, eventually, we're going to have to come up with a transportation committee to research this. But transportation should be on the front seat because it's not getting any better, just to help those that, you know, that live like out in the suburbs and can't get to the places they need to go. So this is something we definitely need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. We've arrived at our last question. For this question, you will have a full two minutes to answer the question along with your closing remarks. In two minutes, we'll begin with Mr. Kush. What do you see as the role of county government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse community that has resulted from the growth of Rutherford County?
Say that one more time, please.
Sure. What do you see as the role of county government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse community that has resulted from the growth of Rutherford County?
Well, the first thing that pops in my mind is affordable housing. We sorely lack the, we sorely lack the areas in the county for people to afford housing. You know, if you'll recall, from the religious side, talking about the diversification, you know, we had a huge issue that brought national attention with the mosque a few years ago, which I and a few others that run the planning commission were deeply involved in. But we are a melting pot, just like every other city in the country are. And I would hope that, as a county, we are beyond certain old ideas and old thoughts. There's no room for that in county government and on the commission for segregation and not being fair to, one, by either their status of economics or status of religion or status of race, that, in my opinion, that ship has sailed. I see everybody as equal, no matter what their income or their creed or beliefs are. So, you know, the county needs to be fair to everybody and not single anybody out. But affordable housing is one. You talked about transportation just a second ago. Well, who needs that transportation? Well, that would be the folks that can't afford it, or the ones that need to get from point A to point B in certain parts of the county. So that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, what do you see as the role of county government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse community that has resulted from the growth of Rutherford County? You have two minutes.
Just to expand on the question just a couple minutes ago, first of all, we can't keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. We know that doesn't work. We're a diverse, very diverse county. And unless you are actively seeking out and understanding that diversity, how can you represent it? We have families that are juggling school-age kids. We do not need to make the schools harder by allowing school choice or school vouchers to come into Rutherford County. We already have good schools. We need to enhance and support them so they can continue to be that way. We need to be able to understand the needs of the diverse communities that are moving into Rutherford County. We need to value every voice, no matter their income level, no matter their social status in our county. It doesn't, none of that matters. The person and the voice is what matters. That's what I want to be. I'm part of a diverse community. I'm part of a diverse district. I'm literally, right now, living what so many people are also living. There's an understanding and an empathy that I have that I can relate to other people. That's why I'm running for District 7 specifically, not just because I live there. It's because I understand this district and I can make a change that helps make sure our district is taken care of as well as Rutherford County in a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes, what do you see as the role of county government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse community that has resulted from the growth of Rutherford County?
We do have a diverse community. It's really amazing to me. I think that, just from the clients that I know, there's probably 11 or 12 different religions that I'm aware of, social, economic backgrounds, and ethnicities. I think we cover the entire gamut of everybody that has come to the middle Tennessee area and Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. So we're pretty proud of that. But one of the things that I see that inhibits diversity that maybe the county can look at is what is known as the digital divide. The digital divide is those families and those individuals that have access to high-speed internet and those that don't. There's a noted difference in education, in money control standards, in family structure. Those that have internet, high-speed internet access, they do better in homework than those that don't. So as a county, we've got to look and see, can we close the digital divide? The other thing that we've got to do is we've got to open our minds that there's going to be other religions that come into this area that were not traditionally here. We're going to have to accept that marriage has been redefined, and it's not going to be changed back. And so we have to accept those different diverse communities within our traditional Bible belt, Rutherford County. We have to accept, just like there's a battle right now between small business, homeowners, and agriculture. And we all should sit down at the same table and have a common discussion on that. So the diversity is not going to go away. It's only going to increase, and we have to accept that. And as a commission, we have to plan on how do we accomplish that. But I think it all starts with the digital divide.
Thank you. Mr. P., what do you see as the role of county government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse community that has resulted from the growth of Rutherford County? You have two minutes.
I think the answer to that is pretty simple. It's hiring. We should require hiring of our diverse community, you know, whether that's Hispanic, Black, White, whatever, you know, the religion. I recently had an opportunity to work in an environment. And when I'd sit down to lunch, I had to talk to myself if I wanted to talk because I didn't understand anybody around me. One guy on one side was speaking Korean, another one was speaking Arabic, one over here was speaking Chinese, majority of them were speaking Spanish. So if you think that we don't see that kind of diversity in Rutherford County, you're definitely wrong. You need to open up your eyes and see that it's out there. But again, we have a couple of methods that we are doing a good job with. One is SROs. Believe it or not, we are bringing our community together with these kids in the schools. You know, you've got an intercity kid that doesn't trust white guys. Well, suddenly, there's a guy there that he can get to know and trust and learn. And that's the kind of thing that we need to teach and vice versa, whether it's female or male. But in closing, I'd like to repeat a couple of things. I'm the guy that got the SROs in our schools. We wouldn't have them and all of them, or we'd be scrambling like the rest of the state is to get them in there now after these recent shootings. I fought and got the freeze, the tax freeze for our 65-year-olds. I helped facilitate the sale of our Guy James property, which is actually very close to where my opponent lives, which was zoned to be a landfill. We sold that to the state of Tennessee, and it's now a dairy farm, and it's not going to be a landfill. I also pushed and got half of our development tax, instead of the commissioners being to spend it fru-fru-wise. It goes straight to debt, so our kids don't have these debts to pay off. I required that, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, what do you see as the role of county government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse community that has resulted from the growth of Rutherford County? Two minutes.
The growth of Rutherford County began a long time ago. And back in the early 1800s, when the Reeds unhitched that team out there on the back nine of Champions Run, I just hope it wasn't said back then that there goes the neighborhood. You know, our role as a county government, when it comes to diversity, is to treat everybody the same as by law. And that's our responsibility, that we provide the schools, we provide law enforcement, that we provide fire protection, that we provide the infrastructure, the streets, the water, and things that we need there for all the citizens of Rutherford County, not just a few. And look for what we have to do there and work with that situation. Diversity, that's been going on, like I said at the very beginning, as people have been coming here. You know, everybody that I run, a lot of people that I run into when we're talking about the growth here in Rutherford County, they keep asking, "Why? Why are these people coming here?" And I have to tell them, because they want what we have here. It's a great place to bring up your children. I have five grandchildren. Two of them are in the public schools, out there at Rockvale. And that's why we're here, and that's why they have come here, too. And I think our role in, as a county government here, no, it's not to give away the store. It's to provide the things that are needed to make it available for people to have a good life here. And that's what we do. But we do it at a reasonable price, and we do it at a good, affordable price for these people to come here and live. And now, as a role of our government, it's to be fair with the people that are here.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips, what do you see as the role of county government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse community that has resulted from the growth of Rutherford County?
Thank you, Ashley. It's a great question. It's a pretty simple answer. Government should be neutral towards those they interact with. There should be a level playing field for whoever you are, no matter what you believe, no matter what you look like. Government shouldn't get in your way of you doing what you'd like to do within the legal system. You know, diversity in this county is more just in our looks. We look different from each other, or we have different beliefs. That's as far as diversity goes. I believe everyone here in this county values the same thing, all 300,000-plus of us. All they want are great schools, which we have, and we continue to have. They want liberty, to be able to do with their property what they see fit and what they purchased it for. They want a good job to support their family, and we have that here in Rutherford County. Our diversity is what makes us great. And any representative worth his salt is going to go out there and interact with whatever community is there, whether they have a different belief system or not, and find out how we can continue to be a better county. Now, if I could go back real quick on changes that we would like to see here in Rutherford County government, I think one of the things we could do is work with our state legislature and the federal government and get them out of our classrooms. Let our teachers teach. Because that's what they went to school for, to teach our kids, to help them learn and to be productive citizens of this county. So I think that's another thing I wanted to make sure I covered. And in closing, you know, I'm just a regular guy. I wake up at 5:00 a.m. to be at work at 6:00 o'clock in the morning to beat the traffic in Laverne to work at my recycling plant. I need your feedback if I become your representative, and I would certainly appreciate your vote. Coming up tomorrow, early voting starts through the 28th or August 2nd. And I want to serve you, and ultimately, I want to lead with the other 20 commissioners on this commission.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan, what do you see as the role of county government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse community that has resulted from the growth of Rutherford County? You have two minutes.
I used to think that we were behind. I had a conversation with one of the ladies that work across the office over there, and I asked her, because I know the city... because I know the city, they're pretty diverse, and I asked her, I said, "Well, why are we not hiring, you know, different types of people, a diverse type of people?" And the first thing she said is, "They're not applying." So, I had to back up and not think that anymore, because at the end of the day, if you're not applying, it's hard for us to be diverse, as far as, you know, the work, working here. But we just continue to learn to reach out to them, and hopefully, you know, we'll get it where it needs to be. So, thank you.
Mr. Ternigan, what do you see as the role of county government in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse community that has resulted from the growth of Rutherford County? You have two minutes.
Well, I think we need to look at all citizens regardless and try to work together and get along, and what's good for one citizen is good for all.
Thank you. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters in Rutherford County, I want to thank all of the candidates for their participation today. I also want to recognize Brian Robertson, Director of the Rutherford County Office of Information Technology, and Lee Harris, Communications Director, and their staff for their cooperation in presenting this program on governmental Channel 19 and making it available on the county website. I want to encourage all Rutherford County citizens to vote. Early voting begins July 13th and goes through July 28th. Election Day is August 2nd. Please exercise this important right to determine who will be on the Rutherford County Commission. Remember, your vote counts. May we close with a round of applause for the candidates? Good evening. My name is Ashley Riley Souza, and I will serve as the moderator for this candidate forum. This forum is co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, and the Rutherford County Office of Information Technology. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent way for voters to become more familiar with candidates and their positions. It is my pleasure to welcome both our audience here at the county courthouse and our viewers at home to this program. This evening, we will be hearing remarks from the candidates for Rutherford County Commissioner, Districts 13, 18, 19, and 21. Before introducing the candidates, I would like to outline the procedure for the forum. Each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement in a two-minute period. When all candidates have completed the opening statement, then several additional questions will be asked. The candidates will respond to each of those questions with a one-minute answer. The candidates will be allowed two minutes to answer the last question and make any closing remarks. I will begin by introducing each candidate. I want to thank each of them for their gracious acceptance of our invitation to participate in this event. Speaking first is Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Please give us your opening remarks. You have two minutes.
My name is Paul Johnson. I've worn many hats in my journey through life. First of all, I'm a Christian. I'm a father. I'm a husband. I'm a grandfather. I'm a retired police officer. I'm a veteran. And lastly but least, least but last, I'm a Republican, and I'm very conservative. My wife and I have been married 52 years, and we've lived here in Rutherford County 34 years. 32 of that has been in the Casey Lane area. And I am a very conservative individual. I look at the tax dollars as my own money, because I'm a taxpayer with taxpaying in the city and the county. So, that's my claim to fame, my conservatism and my dedication to the position of county commissioner, which I'm now serving.
Thank you. Speaking next, we have Mr. Rogers. You have two minutes to give your opening statement.
Thank you. So, my name is Brian Rogers. I am a lifelong resident of Rutherford County. All my 44 years have been spent here. I've spent the last 20 years in the Casey Lane area in District 13. I've owned two houses there. I was actually married 20 years ago at Kennansburg in District 13. I've raised two children, both through black in high school. One just graduated, and the other one's just starting as a freshman. My career for the past 20 years has been a software developer and systems architect for a small company outside of Franklin. I've been lucky enough to work at home the majority of my time while my kids were growing up. I have had lots of experiences working with lots of different companies all over the world with large teams, going through their issues, what they need for their software to do, breaking that down into smaller chunks, finding solutions for all of these things that suit for everyone. I also am very cautious about taxes. I think lots of us are concerned these days about our property taxes going up and very concerned about how that money is being spent. As commissioner, I would love to pay more attention to the new money that we're going to be having in, coming in from the tax increases, make sure that it is spent in the best way for all of the citizens.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Brown. You have two minutes for your opening remarks.
Yes, my name is Melinda Brown, and I moved here from northwest Arkansas approximately 16 years ago. I came here with about $800 in my pocket and whatever I could fit in my car. After that, I pretty much worked really, really hard to get myself through law school. I went at night, but still maintained my 45 hours or so at work every day. I worked for some great attorneys. I worked with some great attorneys. I've enjoyed most of what I've seen in the legal field and in the legal community here. That's sort of been my focus up to this point. But I did start my own practice about six years ago. Approximately three years ago, I moved down to the downtown square right across the street over here. My focus is social security disability benefits. I do spend a lot of time helping people who are sort of down on their luck and sort of at the bottom. I'm also very adamant about being someone who gives back to this community. And so, I did start volunteering over at Greenhouse Ministries. I'm going to be taking over their free legal clinic that we do a couple of times a month. It's something that I believe very hard, with my heart and soul, that we have to help people and help those who need some help kind of come up from the bottom. On the opposite side of that, of course, I'm a business owner. I'm an employer. I'm a female in business, which is always fun. So, I work very hard at making sure that I stretch everything that I can. All of my resources have to be utilized in the best possible way. And I think that our county commissioner needs to be able to do that as well. It's something that I kind of feel like we need some new voices and some new thoughts going into our commission, and that's what I'm hoping to bring.
Thank you. Next is Mr. McAdoo. You have two minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you. My name is Alan McAdoo. I'm a lifelong resident of Rutherford County. And my past experience on the Board of Commissioners has been I've served chairman on several committees. Presently, I'm chairman of the Property Management Committee, in which you can see the progress that the committee has made in the downtown area. Also, I've served as chairman pro tim. And I base all this, and telling you all this, because my colleagues think I can do the job, because they put me in the chairman position, and I come through all the time. Basically, when we speak of tax increase, we didn't have a tax increase this time, and it's not looking like we're going to have one the next time. That's because we are good stewards of the taxpayer's dollars. As you speak of education, we've got a new high school going up in Rock Vale that should be opening this fall, and that was done with no new taxes. Judicial building, no new property taxes, because I'm a firm believer in the user tax method. If you use it, you pay for it. So, therefore, the judicial building is paying for itself. Also, as I speak to you, my pride and joy this time is the new technical center for the library. It's located on the Harpgood campus, and it's in a position where the students at MTSU can tutor unfavored kids. And also, it's in a position where people can go and use the computer systems to look up for jobs and everything, and it's within walking distance. So, I'm very proud of that. Basically speaking, thank you.
Thank you. That thing always cuts me off. Next up, we have Mr. Irvin. You have two minutes to make your opening remarks.
My name is Steve Irvin. I'm a member of 3, 3rd Baptist in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I've been married to my wife Debbie for 27 years. I have six children. I'm a veteran, former police officer, and I've taught at Lighthouse Christian School for the past 19 years. I want to give the people in my district a voice in decision-making that we make every day that affects their lives, and I feel I'm the best choice for that.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Nonley. You have two minutes to make your opening remarks.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Nunley. I'm running for county commissioner in District 19. And first, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. I'm really excited to be here tonight. I thought I'd take this time just to tell you a little bit about myself and why I want to be your county commissioner. I've lived in Rutherford County for 12 years with my husband Joel Wright and three of the most adorable dogs you've ever seen. I graduated from Vanderbilt University with a degree in political science, and I began my career in the nonprofit sector, working for organizations like the Girl Scout Council of Tennessee and the Women's Center at Vanderbilt. For the past nine years, I've been building my business as a consultant in digital communications. I work with nonprofits and small businesses to make sure we connect their messages with their customers. Whether I'm working for a business or a cause, my main goals are to connect people and to make sure their voices are heard. That's one of the main reasons I'm running for office. As we all know, Rutherford County is growing. Since I moved here in 2006, 90,000 people have moved here too. There's a lot of positive and negative that comes with that much growth that fast. I want to make sure we address issues like affordable housing, making sure our infrastructure keeps up with the pace of our growth, and making sure we connect our communities and amplify our voices. I'm very excited to be here tonight. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Brierley. You have two minutes to make your opening remarks.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. I really appreciate it. My name is Patty Brierley. I'm running for commissioner in the 21st District. I've lived in the area for 33 years. I am retired from Nissan. As a child, I worked at Sir Pizza in Jackson Heights, and then I opened up the one on East Main when it opened up when I was 17. I'm here. I want to serve the county, every race, creed, whatever. I'm there for you. I want to help you. I want to help you achieve your goals. I want to keep our taxes lower. I want to see growth come, residential, financial, and factories. And hopefully, one day, we'll get a headquarters here somewhere, instead of taking it all the way to Nashville, when we've got a lot of the major people here in Rutherford County. And I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. And next is Mr. Serenio. You have two minutes to make your opening remarks.
Thank you so much for the League of Women Voters, and thank you for the citizens of Rutherford County. My name John Serenio. I came from the country of Laos, Southeast Asia, near Vietnam, Cambodia, and Laos. I have been here, I was in my country, was the educator working for the school system in the government of Laos. I also taught the foreign language, a foreigner to speak the language also, especially from the U.S. The missionary even to my country, they need to speak the native language. That's why they called me to help in learning. I came to this country just because of pursue and further my education. Got a scholarship from American Airlines, which my sponsor, who brought me here, is in Nashville, worked for American Airlines. I got my degree from MTSU and joined the Rutherford County School System as a guidance counselor and also communicated liaison from the community and the school system. I have been with the school system for many years, and I retired from that. I decided to run for the county commission because I really love the citizens of Rutherford County. They helped me. I'm so proud to be here and live in Rutherford County over 40 years. And I really enjoy serving in the county commission. You know, I served on the several committee, Health and Education, Public Work and Planning, and Public Safety. And I really enjoy, and thank you for allowing me to serve, and I seek for the reelection for the third term. And thank you for all your support and connect to my, thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to our questions. The first question will be answered first by Mr. Rogers. You will have one minute to answer the question. What do you feel is the number-one issue facing Rutherford County in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
So, great question. I think that everyone in this county would probably agree that the number-one issue right now is the landfill, and we must do something about this. I've done a bit of reading about this. It appears that we have really done nothing over the past 10 years or so, very much to relieve this, and we know that this is going to be an issue. We actually hired some people to do a study. They came back with some options. One of those options was to do nothing. I personally don't consider that an actual option. I would love to see us take the severe county method of converting our garbage and recyclables into compost, returning it back to the community, converting some of the plastics into energy in some way. I believe there's solutions that can be found.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, what do you feel is the number-one issue facing Rutherford County in the next five years, and how would you address that issue? You have one minute.
I would sort of look at this as a multifaceted problem. The biggest problem that we have is the growth that's happening in this county. And it's happening in extremely wonderful ways, but also creating a number of problems that simply are just not being addressed at the pace in which the county is growing. So, I feel like the growth being completely just unhindered in any way in every which direction, I think that's creating problems of unaffordable housing. It's creating problems of sort of areas that are very highly developed, but then other areas are not. It's creating problems of accelerating our landfill problems. It's creating the problems of not having enough schools for our children to go to. So, I think that the county commission needs to look at everything as a whole as one big puzzle, and the county commission just has to respond faster in order to keep up with the growth and all of the other problems that come with that.
Thank you. Mr. McAdoo, what do you feel is the number-one issue facing Rutherford County in the next five years, and how would you address that issue? You have one minute.
Thank you. Growth is definitely a factor, also the landfill. We are addressing some of those issues now. With the landfill, we purchase properties, and the property will contain a rail system that can be used in the future if we need to use it to transport our trash out of county. These problems can't be solved in a day or whatnot, because we, our hands are tied basically with the state also. And so, we have to do things that we're putting in place based on the state letting us do these things. Growth is an issue that is driving everything, but in Rutherford County, our growth seems to be more positive than negative, and you can tell that by looking at Rutherford County and the progress that we've made over the last several years and will continue to make in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin, what do you feel is the number-one issue facing Rutherford County in the next five years, and how would you address that issue? You have one minute.
I think one of the biggest issues is as fast as our county's growing, we need the schools to keep growth with the growth of the students coming here. And I think to do that, we need to hire qualified teachers to step in and educate our kids and keep our educational system where it is. You know, we're ranked pretty high on the educational system here. And I think we need to pay the teachers good enough to get qualified teachers here to teach the kids when we do. teach the kids when we do build the new schools.
Thank you. Ms. Nunley. What do you feel is the number one issue facing Rutherford County in the next five years? And how would you address that issue? You have one minute.
There's been several issues facing our county for many years, and we can no longer wait 10 to 15 issues to solve a single, single one. I would focus on issues like affordable housing and keep, having our infrastructure keep up with the pace of growth. But I think the most pressing issue is definitely our landfill. It'll be full in four years. And we know that the EPA has said that 70% of the waste stream going into our landfill could be diverted through composting and recycling program. Despite spending $250,000 on a consultant, the current county commission has no clear plan and no initiative. We cannot wait any longer. We must create a comprehensive recycling and composting program.
I mean, thank you. Ms. Brierly. What do you feel is the number one issue facing Rutherford County in the next five years? And how would you address that issue? You have one minute.
The number one thing, again, is the growth. Rutherford County has, just as you say, we're busting at the seams. Our land is getting taken up. Like HCA Hospital down at Stonecrest, they're adding on more to their ER. They're adding 30 more beds, as well as St. Thomas, Rutherford is fixing to add on too. Our schools are adding on every single day. If you just look around at the schools, they're adding on every day. And the education, we got to think about the kids. The trash, that's another major thing for us. And homeless. Our people are, we have a lot of homeless here that you don't realize, and they need to be helped along the way too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serino. What do you feel is the number one issue facing Rutherford County in the next five years? And how would you address this issue? You have one minute.
Well, thank you. I agree with several, you know, who mentioned, you know, the growth in the landfills and the schools and, you know, we, I served on the planning committee, and we discuss and we study about the, you know, we have the director, Mr. McNolan, who has worked very hard and, you know, discuss and try to plan, plan for the, the coming. And also the school system, you know, we have built school system almost every year. And now, the high school, you know, Rockvale, we still working on the process of opening very soon. So, all of this, you know, we work and study and committee and serve and joy, and hopefully, you know, everything will work out. So that's why I seek my reelection to try to support anything, try to help and solve the problem.
Thank you. And Mr. Johnson. What do you feel is the number one issue facing Rutherford County in the next five years? And how would you address that issue? You have one minute.
The general consensus is that the landfill is the main priority right now. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Rogers here that nothing's been done. Recently, the full commission voted to not expand the landfill, and we hopefully have a window of six to eight years to address this situation. And trust me, it will be addressed. But when you have the situation of 20 people per day, which equates to 600 people a month are moving into Rutherford County, this will not be ignored, but, and it will not go away, but it will be addressed through committees and any situation that we need to look at, recycling, composting, whatever needs to be done, it will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Ms. Brown. You will have one minute to answer this question. Tell us what influences your decision, your decisions more: fiscal control or quality of life? And tell us why.
Well, the biggest issue is that you have to have a balance between the two. And certainly, anytime when I'm going to be giving up my taxpayer dollars, of which I work really hard to earn, I'm certainly going to make sure that I'm getting a lot for those dollars. So I do feel like fiscal responsibility is, is very important, but at the same time, I know that there are a lot of things that this community has to have. So really, it's more about balancing and making sure you're getting the quality of those benefits for every dollar that you're spending, and that there's absolutely no frivolous waste whatsoever, that you try to cut as much of that out. And there are lots of different ways that you can sometimes trim here and trim there. But one of the other things that we've got is the reassessment that happened this year. So we do have a lot of new property taxes that are going to be coming in, and I think that that money is already, you know, it's there. We just need to make sure we're doing exactly what we can with it to give the biggest impact for the quality of life of all residents.
So, McAdoo. Tell us what influences your decisions more: fiscal control or quality of life? And tell us why. You have one minute.
Well, quality of life definitely is number one to me, and the control comes with it. As you can see, that Rutherford County right now, we're doing a good job of, with our tax dollars. We hadn't had a tax increase in several years, and we are building schools and everything for the quality of life. And we do have programs that are addressing some of the issues that are being brought up tonight. Our finance department keep the board of commissioners abreast to how much monies we have to work with. And they just received an award from the state, from, from the audit committee, and I think we are one of the 13 counties in the state to have an excellent audit. So therefore, you can see that we are doing a great job in accessing the monies that are coming in.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin. Tell us what influences your decisions more: fiscal control or quality of life? And tell us why. You have one minute.
Quality of life is important. People move to Rutherford County. It's a great place to live, a great place to raise a family, and a great place to open a business. I think we need to maintain the quality of life that we have in Rutherford County. And along with that, you know, you have to have some control over what happens in the county. I really feel strongly that, you know, we don't need to change the outlook of our county the way it is now. You know, we need to maybe install some programs that helps people. But I think for the most part, Rutherford County, we want to keep the, the view of the outline of the county the same it's always been.
Thank you. Ms. Nunley. Tell us what influences your decisions more: fiscal control or quality of life? And tell us why. You have one minute.
I think both are really important. Anyone who's ever volunteered at a church, a faith organization, or a nonprofit knows that they know how to do a lot, do a lot of good with a small budget. And that's one of the most important things I've learned in my career. We have a lot of issues facing us in Rutherford County. And of course, we're all concerned of how we're going to pay for expanding our roads and building new schools, and for solving the landfill issue. Those are reasonable concerns, but we cannot keep pushing these issues down the road. I can tell you that I know how to do a lot with a little, and I'll make sure that every tax dollar that we spend keeps an eye on us, moving us forward and not just standing still.
Tell us what influences your decisions more: fiscal control or quality of life? And tell us why. You have one minute.
We have a good quality of life here, but I'd like to see higher-paying jobs come into the county, because a family cannot be raised off minimum wage. We have to have better wages here. It's hard for a young family to start out and get married and work on a minimum wage job. Our churches, we have great churches here in all denominations, faith, shopping, and again, with the helping hands, we have, like Salvation Army. It does a lot of good for a lot of people, and we need more base places like that to help us out. And with the roads, our roads are really getting so small, and we, we need to figure out somehow with new eyes, new ears, to figure out how to set these straight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serino. Tell us what influences your decisions more: fiscal control or quality of life? And tell us why. You have one minute.
Well, quality of life, you know, is almost everything, including the schools and hospitals and communities and services that the Rutherford County provide, you know. I think Rutherford County provide the first-class services to the citizens of Rutherford County. I'm so proud, happy to see that. And so, you know, as far as the, talking about the health system, I served on the Stonecrest Medical Center, also board member. I served on different boards. So we study about how we can help our folk. Also, the Rutherford County is one very fine county, and also, you know, the, talking about employment, that mean we have the lowest in the, the state. And so, I'm proud to see many people got jobs because they are happy, they have housing, everything, all the transportation, this suit them very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson. Tell us what influences your decisions more: fiscal control or quality of life? And tell us why. You have one minute.
I think no one would disagree that the quality of life in this county is premium, and it foremost on everyone's mind, on the present county commissioners. When you're spending $70 million for a new high school out here at Rockvale, education is one of the top priorities for our future generations. And it's very proactive. This new school will have shop classes, you know. Everyone does not need to go to college, or not necessarily need to go to college, but everyone don't want to go to college. We need people to know how to take care of HVAC system. And so, we are spending the money wisely, and I support the quality of life that we have through our sheriff's office and all the different entities that take care of the quality of life that we so greatly enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers. Tell us what influences your decisions more: fiscal control or quality of life? And tell us why. You have one minute.
I think that ultimately, quality of life is more important, although these two things really go hand in hand. If people have a great quality of life, they're not going to mind paying a little more in taxes to, to help that quality of life. If they have a poor quality of life, they're going to be very mad about the taxes that they have to pay, because they're not going to see where that money is going to benefit them. I think overall, though, with Rutherford County being one of the top five counties in Tennessee as far as growth and size, I think that quality of life is, is what brings people here. They, they see how great it is to live here, they see that how relatively low our taxes actually are. I think that as a whole, they feel like, you know, it's being managed responsibly. I think that we can do lots more to enhance the quality of life for every citizen and not just a few.
Thank you. We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Mr. McAdoo. You'll have one minute to answer this question. How do you think county government should be involved in assuring affordable housing to low and medium-income families?
Thank you. Over the past years, we have helped with the taxes on different affordable housing programs. Habitat Program and the city program per se is deferring the property taxes on that and trying to keep it where people can own and enjoy their own home. Basically speaking, watching the tax dollars will help, and you can see that, especially in 18th District, that we have affordable housing programs, as I stated before, and we got away from the old project system. So in other words, people can own their own home and be proud of, of their home and, and everything. And you can, and a good example would be the example in 18th District.
On the right page here. Mr. Irvin. How do you think county government should be involved in assuring affordable housing to low and medium-income families? You have one minute.
I think naturally, everybody should have a good quality of life and a good place to live. But I also think that, you know, you have to work for it. And I think, you know, people that want affordable housing, we should secure jobs to where they're making more money so they can afford better housing. And we should build housing that would basically help them move in and get a fresh start. But just offering them an alternative isn't going to work. You know, we need to have a plan in place to give them the affordable housing. You know, possibly working with Habitat for Humanity and charities like that to get people involved, to help build their own houses and get involved in the process of homeownership, and giving them financial responsibilities, and teaching them how to manage their money so they can afford a better house later on down the road.
Thank you. Ms. Nunley. How do you think county government should be involved in assuring affordable housing to low and medium-income families? You have one minute.
County has a lower-than-average home purchase price, but home prices are rising quickly. We all see the new construction of homes and apartments popping up all over our county. And as new residents choose to call Rutherford County home, we have to work together to make sure we don't displace other residents. There's not just one solution to protecting affordable housing, but there are some things we can try. We can work with developers on big projects, making sure that they set aside some of their house, some of their housing to be affordable. We can partner with landlords and property owners and work on making sure rent stays in an affordable range. And we can work on bringing employers to Rutherford County who pay higher wages. I think we can work together to ensure that everybody who wants to live in Rutherford County can.
Ms. Brierly. How do you think county government should be involved in assuring affordable housing to low and medium-income families? You have one minute.
I am all about the Habitat for Humanity. I've helped build a house with them years ago when I worked at Nissan. I'd love to build another one with them. You, you need to give people a hand up, not a hand out. You need to help them pull their selves up by their own bootstraps. Again, like they were saying, you know, the builders coming in, they still need to put in some lower-income houses, because everybody does not make six digits, you know, salary. There are some that barely breaks the 10 digits, the $10,000 mark for a year. And it's hard on young people that comes up with extra children throughout the year that they did not expect. So, we need to give people a hand up, not a hand out.
Thank you. Mr. Serino. How do you think county government should be involved in assuring affordable housing to low and medium-income families? You have one minute.
You know, I, I meet a different group and, you know, committee and so on and so forth. And so, we always try to help, try to support, you know, for example, the young couple, you know, for example. We always think about the education first, you know, so we work very hard and pursue your new career in technology and so on and so forth. I served on the homeless committee too. I try to help them also. You know, I understand that they have the certain program, try to help the low-income, so that would be good and helpful to the community. When we have the home, you have a good help. That is the most important in life.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson. How do you think county government should be involved in assuring affordable housing to low and medium-income families? You have one minute.
The acoustics is really bad in here. Could you speak up just a little bit? You were very soft-spoken.
I'm trying not to yell at you, so, I apologize for that. I'll yell. How do you think county government should be involved in assuring affordable housing to low and medium-income families? You have one minute.
Housing?
Yes.
Okay. The, the situation with the housing industry here in this county is unfortunately, what has been over the years, what is classified as a starter home of $125,000 to $130,000, it's out of the reach of a lot of people when the builders having to pay $80,000 for a lot. The price of land has just been so exorbitant that it, it's driving them out of the market, and that's what's bringing on all the apartments and condominiums and things of that nature. And a lot of the builders are having to leave the county to go to another county to find affordable land for suitable housing. So that is an issue that needs to be addressed also. But, you know, they're not making any more land, and it's getting more expensive every day.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers. Mr. Rogers, how do you think county government should be involved in assuring affordable housing to low and medium income families? You have one minute.
I think that county government's probably limited in exactly what they can do. I think that probably they could work with the developers to make sure that there are some availability along with the, the upper scale housing that there's also some section eight, some, some other things that people can actually afford in, in town. In our district in particular, we've lost some low income housing where they're building the new training center. Lots of those people had to go to a different county. They, they can no longer afford to live here. I think that we have lots of, of area in District thirteen where we could potentially use some of that land, not only for low income, but for homeless. I think there's lots of opportunity there. I think that we have to work with the developers to make sure that as we grow, that there's still room for everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, how do you think county government should be involved in assuring affordable housing to low and medium income families? You have one minute.
As been, has been stated, there's one obvious thing, which is whenever people are putting in a large development, they should put that into their plan to have at least a certain percentage that is set aside for much more affordable. And we should clearly define what is affordable housing to them so that there's some sort of understanding as to what they're trying to do. But we also need to work with other types of things like our housing development. We do need to invest more in making sure that our codes is up to date and that they're actually going out to a lot of the landlords that are around. I, I see all the time at the legal clinic that there are tons of people who are renting places in my district and in some of the other neighboring districts where the only thing they can find that's even close to affordable is essentially falling apart and codes is not able to do anything to help them. So, the landlords are just able to keep re-renting and increasing the rent, but they're not really getting anything. So, we have to work with them on that.
Thank you. We'll now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Mr. Irvin. Do you think the county should encourage recycling? If so, how? Do you think the county should encourage recycling? If so, how? You have one minute.
With the landfill that we have now, I would almost be willing to bet that over half of it is recyclable materials. You know, we have to have a program in place to where we can recycle materials and separate it and compost to take away from the amount of trash that we have daily. You know, you know, we should make it, you know, work out some kind of program to where if you recycle, you get a discount on your trash. If you don't, then you pay a higher price. We have to, we have to enforce the recycling somehow. You know, right now, I guarantee you that probably in a big neighborhood, probably less than ten percent recycle. And our home, we recycle everything, glass, paper, everything that we can. And I just think it should be mandatory and some kind of program should be in place to where we make sure that it's done so it cuts down on the trash we're taking in.
Thank you. Ms. Nannely, do you think the county should encourage recycling? If so, how? You have one minute.
You, I think this is one of the most important issues with our landfill that's going to be full in four years. We have to figure out a comprehensive recycling and composting program. And I think we can look, right here in Tennessee, I think Brian mentioned earlier, Sevier County has a great composting facility. Everything goes into one can. You put your can out, the trash goes in with solid waste, everything goes in, is taken to the composting facility and is sorted out so that there's a huge high percentage that's composted and recycled. And I think that's important because we have to make it extremely easy for people to recycle. And we need to follow the example of a county right here in Tennessee for how we can do that.
Thank you. Ms. Riley, do you think the county should encourage recycling? And if so, how? You have one minute.
Yes, I do. I recycle at my home. Again, if we don't recycle, where, where are we going to put it? We're, we're running out of space for trash. We got to have that space for people. Our people has to have land. Trash can be recycled, just like you take an astronaut, you send him into space. What does he do with his urine? He recycles it. He has to, or she has to drink it. So, why can we not do the same as far as our trash and things? And the severable method, it works. Don't knock it unless you tried. And, you know, just come in with eyes open, ears open to see what else we can do for our future.
Sorry about that. Mr. Serino, do you think the county should encourage recycling? And if so, how? You have one minute.
Well, you know, I mentioned earlier about the landfill, so we studied very hard. The director who worked for that, you know, studied and tried to discuss and tried to say, find way, way to improve and try to help. And talking about the recycling, you know, I'm, I'm a big supporter in that area, you know. I have done this for many years since I came here. Always save that newspaper and cans and bottle I carry to MTSU, you know, the, they have the place where they sleep. I also attend the recycle of Rutherford, you know, discuss that with the best way to handle. And they have done so wonderful job and so to what the county.
Mr. Johnson, do you think the county should encourage recycling? And if so, how?
Repeat it, please.
Do you think the county should encourage recycling? And if so, how?
I still do not understand you.
I'm sorry. Sometimes I speak into this and I'm not entirely sure that it's picking up my voice. Do you think the county should encourage recycling? And if so, how?
Let me read the question, please, ma'am. We've got to do something about the acoustic here. It's bad.
Seems like this one is bad.
Recycling? Sure. Okay. I do it myself. No, recycling is very important and I don't know what else we can do to encourage it because when, when you're going to convenience center down here on East Main and you have all your cardboard, et cetera, to be recycled and the cotton picking thing is full, you know, it discourages you there all the way along. But we need to do more about encouraging recycling and that's going to be part of the answers to our problems with the landfill. But I, I don't know, it's like you, you can't make people recycle, but I don't know what we can do to make it more attractive for them to do. But we do need to keep recycling as much as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers, do you think the county should encourage recycling? And if so, how? You have one minute.
I absolutely think that they should. I think that how far behind our local recycling companies are show that there's a demand for it. They can't keep up with the number of people that want bins for them to come and pick up to recycle. People are willing to pay all kinds of money for, for people to come and pick their recycling up. Lots of people take it to the not-so-convenience centers where they try to jam it in exactly. I think there's lots that we can do. I think that it is very difficult to get people to separate. That's, that is the issue. It's why we need to move to a single container thing like in Sevier County where it's very simple. You put all of your stuff in one bin, we handle all of the recycling down the line, we get compost out of the deal, everyone is happy and no one has to go out of their way on a Saturday to go dump cardboard at the, the convenience centers. The county will make some money off of that. They make money off of recycling cardboard and recycling glass and different things like that. So there are ways to offset that, but people are willing to pay for that. And people in the city are getting ready to have to pay for, for trash pickup.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, do you think the county should encourage recycling? And if so, how? You have one minute.
Well, certainly, we, we need to be recycling, but I think the best way that you can encourage people is first start by educating people. A lot of people don't even know how to recycle. They don't know what's recyclable. They don't know what to do with it. They don't know where to take it. Now, certainly, if we could come up with a great system like Sevier County where you're doing the composting and you do all that sorting, great. And a lot of people, if you're educating them on that, they might be really willing to pay a little more in taxes in order to help make that easier for everyone. But one of the biggest things is you have to let them understand why it's so important because we are going to run out of land and there isn't anywhere else to put it. And certainly, shipping it somewhere else and making it someone else's problem is not the solution that we need. So I think a big educational push is really the best thing that the county can do to try to help sort of organize this and get it to be a community-wide thing that we do.
Thank you. Mr. McAdoo, do you think the county should encourage recycling? And if so, how? You have one minute.
Yes, I think we should, but we do have a couple of programs in place now. We have a person to go around to the schools and, and we got recycling programs going on in the schools. And this person is, is training people, the kids and everything, the importance of recycling. Now, the county can only recycle convenience centers, so on and so forth. Your city municipalities would have to be looking at the houses individually in their area because the county do not do no pickup at the houses. Right now, we do have our convenience centers set up with different bins for recycling. And to say that we could do more, most definitely, we could do more in this area. And I think soon as we get the property onboard down on Florence Road and areas where we can motivate people to recycle and in a convenient spot, I think you will see more progress in the recycling program in Rutherford County.
Thank you. We'll now turn to our next question, and this question will be answered first by Ms. Nannely. You'll have one minute to answer this question. How do you determine your priorities when achieving all goals is not possible?
That's a great question. And we do have a number of issues facing Rutherford County that we've been facing for some time. I think that you have to look at the issues and find out what's most pressing, what affects the most people and is the most urgent. For me, I want to work on things like affordable housing, making sure our infrastructure keeps pace with our growth and working on our solid waste plan.
Thank you. Ms. Riley, how do you determine your priorities when achieving all goals is not possible? You have one minute.
The main thing for me is children, schools, schools, affordable housing and roads. That is the top three that need to be addressed. Thank you.
You. Mr. Serino, how do you determine your priorities when achieving all goals is not possible? You have one minute.
Well, you know, I agree with the other person already mentioned, you know, school system would be the first priority toward the children go to school, they learn, they have more skill, you know, pursue, achieve the goals. And that is the most important things and, you know, the school system have done so wonderful job, set example. And I think Rutherford County being recognized by nation, you know, the Secretary of State, I mean, the education came to visit the Oakland High School and that I was so happy and so proud to set example to the other to do the same.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, how do you determine your priorities when achieving all goals is not possible?
Yes. Determining priorities, we need to address in the budgets, we always look at addressing the needs for the quality of life that the citizens require and demand. We need to check the needs first and address those. And then whatever we can address for your wants, that is what needs to follow. But we have been very fortunate that we have been able to take care of the school systems. And when you're looking at seventy-five percent of the budget that's expended for the school system, that leaves some small pickings for the other organizations and groups to operate on. But prioritizing on your needs and then addressing your wants is, is an answer to that as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers, how, how do you determine your priorities when achieving all goals is not possible? You have one minute.
My experience tells me that looking at a larger problem and making incremental progress on smaller bits of it actually makes you have progress on the entire thing. So, I think that we can do lots of things. I don't think that we have to have a single priority or two. I think that the county commission is made up of twenty-one people and we have lots of different committees. I think that we can work on lots of things. I think that quality of life must be the top of the thing, of, of what we are concerned with, first of all, because that is what's going to drive more and more people to come to Rutherford County, to pay us tax dollars for property taxes, to spend their money at stores here, to bring more businesses in, to raise wages for everyone else so that they can afford to live. I think that it all boils down to taking priority over individual people's quality of life. And I would love to hear from anyone that would love to tell me what their opinion is, what they feel that that is for them.
Ms. Brown, how do you determine your priorities when achieving all goals is not possible? You have one minute.
This is one of the, the really great places where being a lawyer and helping so many people all at one time is really helpful because there's always way too much work to do in a day, so you have to prioritize. Typically, what you do is look at exactly what is going to cause the most harm and then make sure that that doesn't happen. That's step one, that's sort of emergency. So, thankfully in Rutherford County, we don't have a ton of that right now, which is good. But that means that you sort of look along down the line. It's all about setting things up in a, in a succession to make sure that you keep the worst things from happening to, to actually getting to the better things that you're looking for. One of the things that we do have is a lot of people do have a hard quality of life and they're not doing well. But, I mean, I know a lot of us sort of live in these areas where things are good, but there's a lot that's, that really needs help. And I think that would, for me, always be a priority is looking at those people who really don't have anything and helping them.
Thank you. Mr. McAdoo, how do you determine your priorities when achieving all goals is not possible? You have one minute.
First of all, I look at the public safety of each individual of the county. People have a tendency to do better if they feel like they have a good, safe environment to live and work. I can speak for our public safety in Rutherford County with law enforcement, emergency management. Those are the areas that I look at first to make sure that each and every individual is living in a safe environment. Also, standing from that, education. We got to make sure that our children are attending schools in a safe environment. And we have put in things into place to enhance a better public safety system in Rutherford County. But the key to any individual having a new and best quality of life is public safety.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin, how do you determine your priorities when achieving all goals is not possible? You have one minute.
Rutherford County growing as fast as it is, we have a long list of priorities that we need to take care of. But I would put at the top of the list, education and the safety of our kids. I think we're raising the leaders of tomorrow, so we have to have a good educational system to make sure that the leaders of tomorrow take pride in what they do. And we also have to keep them safe in the school systems. We need institute teachers' pay increases to where we get the best teachers to educate our kids.
Thank you. All right, we've arrived at the last question of the evening. This final question, you'll have two minutes to answer, along with providing any closing remarks. Final question will be first answered by Ms. Riley. And I have it here? I do. Still have to go on the right page. Here we go. If elected, what would be your measure of success in office? You have two minutes.
I would like to see our children have the best education they can have. Without our children, we don't have a future. They don't have a future. And we are here to provide for them. We have to provide affordable housing. Like I said... Like I said, not everybody can make a six-digit figure salary. Some people, they, they just manage to do with what they have. And roads, you know, we, we need good transportation and the roads is sad for them to be able to get from point A to point B in a safe and timely manner. Our taxes, we need to keep them at a minimum. I do live in Rutherford County and I do live in the city, so I pay double taxes. And, you know, it doesn't bother me. And another one of my number-one concerns is our drug system. We have so many people that are ODing over opiates. And it is sad to say that it's, it's not only the young people, it's also the aging people that are ODing on opiates. And we need to keep that in check also. And I know our government's doing as much as they can, but sometimes we have to push a little bit further. And I appreciate the time with the ladies of the League of Women Voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serenio, if elected, what will be your measure of success in office? You have two minutes.
You know, I, I really enjoyed to serve as county commissioner for District 21 for eight years and continue to do. You know, the Rutherford County have done so wonderful job, you know, like I said, you know, provide the super, first-class services to the county. The Rutherford County has the drug court, the veteran court. I attended graduation yesterday, but I see when they claim, right, they know what they have done in the past, and then now they recover. And so this is a very important thing. So you, again, the school system is, have done so wonderful job, you know, this, I really strongly support the budget for the school. I'm so delighted and so happy to see the school built for to support our leader in the future. I also said the young people today would be the future leader in the future. So that is the reason I want to serve and try to continue to serve again. I really contact many, you know, the citizen of Rutherford County support me and put me in this. That's why I promised for them to, I try to do a good job and try to connect with them, try to, I'm thinking of, you know, for example, when the birthday comes, so I send out the birthday card and try to wish them for the happiness, healthy, living in the city, the county where we have the most respectful people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, if elected, what will be your measure of success in office?
You're getting a good workout, aren't you?
I know, right? Number eight right here. If I would have known, I was going to be on my feet over the little flip flops.
If I'm reelected, my goal is to continue the service that I have given for the last 12 years on the county commission to assure the quality of life for all the citizens of this county and not put a burden on them as far as taxes concerned, for them to be sure that they get the bang for their buck and be the conservative representative that I have been for the last 12 years for them. So that's my goal and that, that's what I want to do if I'm reelected. And that's what I promise I will do.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers, if elected, what will be your measure of success in office? You have two minutes.
I would like to see Rutherford County continue to grow in a very smart way. As Mr. Johnson has said, he's, he's been the commissioner for a long time. I believe that it's time to give someone else a chance. I believe that there's lots of things that I can do for our district and for this county. And I would like to, at the end of a four-year term, look back and see that my friends and constituents have a higher quality of life, that they have a higher paying job, that they can actually work in Rutherford County and Murfreesboro and not have to go to Nashville or to Franklin, Cool Springs to have a decent paying job. I would like to drive around Rutherford County and see that the developments that are coming up are not all for, you know, people who can afford a $400, $500,000 house, that there are also, you know, apartments or there are some other smaller houses that, that people can actually afford. I would love to see us be very smart about the new schools that we're going to be building, the new teachers that we're going to be hiring. I would be very happy to, to see that grow in the, in the best way possible. I want to thank League of Women Voters for having us tonight. I would appreciate everyone's vote on August 2nd. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, if elected, what will be your measure of success in office? You have two minutes.
I think if you look back and you see that there's more opportunity for other people and that we've increased not only our population, but we've increased our education, our diversity, our understanding, our sense of community. One of the things I love the most about this area when I moved here is just the small-town feel of it. It's, it's wonderful to have a nice community. And I love going to places in Smyrna and I love, I few places in Liver and then I go. I love, I mean, I've been out to Eagle many times and it's a beautiful area. But all of these areas are part of one community. And I think we need to make sure that Rutherford County stays a county and it stays strong. But we have to find good ways to be more welcoming to more people. We need to encourage everybody of all different financial means and certainly provide the best jobs for them. So I think if I could look back in four years and say, you know, I, I see that we are building that foundation. It's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to happen any year. Certainly, the problems we've got are going to take more than even a two or three years. But if I can look back in four years and say, you know what, we are definitely on the right path and we have so much here to be very thankful for, and that I do not see as many people in, in really struggling and in severe need like I do now, then certainly I'll feel like I've, I've been a success. Certainly, if I feel like other people in the community always can feel like they can approach me and discuss things and know that I will genuinely care and be there for them. And if, if I can, I will do everything possible to make something happen for them. That's a big part of what I want to, to ensure, that everybody feels that they have that connection to their county, to their community, and to their local government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAdoo, if elected, what will be your measure of success in office? You have two minutes.
Thank you. Right now, I can look at my record over the prior years and I can see success. And the main thing I look at, how will the 18th District work into the program of Rutherford County? 18th District is one of the most diversified district in Rutherford County. And I would like to see that it is strong and we do have progress in our district and we do have progress in our county. Basically speaking, you can always look in my record and I am proud of my record and I can run on my record. And I would like to see continued progress in Rutherford County, in which we are doing now. I've heard a lot about the negative things, but we do have a lot of good progress going on in Rutherford County. Some things we can control, some things we cannot. You speak of traffic and all that. The state got to be a helping hand to Rutherford County to achieve some of these problems and to solve some of these problems. But as far as looking at the quality of life in Rutherford County, I think we are on the right path. And I would like to see us moving forward with what we got and continued progress in Rutherford County should be the key.
Thank you. Mr. Irvin, if elected, what will be your measure of success in office? You have two minutes.
Growing up, my father always told me, a measure of a man's success is to make sure that the people he made promises to along the way, that he could face them later on down the road and make sure that he kept all those promises. All the campaign promises that I've made or put on my flyers and signs, I plan on keeping them. I talk to everybody in my neighborhood, everybody in almost every neighborhood that I have in my district, and I talk to them one-on-one, ask them what their problems were. I think I'll measure my success by making sure I keep the words that I promised the people and to make sure that, you know, if somebody needs something, I'll always be there, have my phone available to where they can talk to me and make sure that, you know, I'm a man of my word and that I was honest and I did offer my voice in the decision-making for their neighborhoods and our districts and everything. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting us here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Nunley, if elected, what will be your measure of success in office? You have two minutes.
A couple of things that I'd like to see. I'd like to see our county commission become more nimble and responsive. We have a lot of pressing issues that need action and we can't afford to keep pushing these issues down the road. I think another measure of success would be more involvement from the constituents in my district, whether that's through voting or input to the county commission. One of the things I've noticed when talking to people in District 19 is that most people don't even know there is a commission, what they do or who represents them. And that's a shame because a lot of the issues that we face at the local level have an immediate and significant impact on people's lives. So I think that'd be an important measure of success. I'd like to say thank you again to the League of Women Voters, to the candidates here tonight, to people here in the audience in the county courthouse and those watching on TV. I want to be the county commission, I want to be the county commissioner for District 19 to bring new energy and a fresh perspective and represent all of the members of the district. Rutherford County is becoming increasingly diverse and growing rapidly. Our county commission must start meeting the needs of this diverse community and making sure that our resources keep pace with our growth. You know, we talk about government, we think about the national, national issues that we see on TV, but it's really those local issues that are really important. So I'll work to make sure your voice is heard and that we grow together without leaving anyone behind. I'm here tonight to ask for your support, for your input, for your ideas, and I'm asking for your vote. I'm Stacy Nunley and I'm running for county commissioner in District 19.
Thank you. And thank you to all the candidates. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and Rutherford County, I want to thank all the candidates for their participation today. I also want to recognize Brian Robertson, Director of the Rutherford County Office of Information Technology, and Lee Harris, Communications Director, and their staff for their cooperation in presenting this program on Governmental Channel 19 and making it available on the county website. I want to encourage all Rutherford County citizens to vote. Early voting begins July 13th and goes through July 28th. Election Day is August 2nd. Please exercise this important right to determine who will be on the Rutherford County Commission. Remember, your vote counts. And may we close with a round of applause for the candidates.